For the late start, it's November 1st, the 1st of November, and the legislation to be discussed in the pre-meeting conference. We're a little late, we're starting at a quarter after six, and I'd like to start with ordinance number one. It's for the sale of some equipment, surplus equipment, if council saw the pictures on it. It's some outdated computer equipment, most of it, and printers. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, discussion is closed on ordinance number one, let's move to ordinance number two. Ordinance number two is sponsored by Councilman Irving, Councilman Burmaster. It's changing, it's put intersection where stops required. Gentlemen, is there any discussion on this, or if there's any concerns, or?
It's very concerning.
It's very concerning. Everybody good with this? Okay, any questions, any discussions? All right, ordinance number two, discussion is closed, let's move to ordinance number three. Ordinance number three is a resolution sponsored by Councilman Beatrice Williamson, Colosseum Testa, and DeBrengo, honoring Chief Brooks, putting his name on the, I think, Firehouse Two, if I'm correct.
Yes.
Councilman Beatrice, you were at Vanguardous Project, would you like to talk about it?
Yes, first thing, this can be full council, if you guys, anybody wants to get on it.
I would like my name also on it.
Okay, so we can all be full council on that, but, and what's going to happen is, we've, I met with the fire chief and Marcus, and we, they have to put it out for bid for the lettering that's going to be on the house. So it's probably going to be three to four weeks. So when that lettering is done, I'm going to call a special meeting, we're going to have a ceremony and invite to go out. Certain people will talk, and you know, it's going to, I'm going to make it kind of a big ceremony. I'd like some firemen and their blues, and you know, I'd like the mayor, I'd like, you know, Marion Button Sean, Joe Griffo, Tony Pesseny, I'm going to ask Tommy Carcone, he's the president of the union, and we'll have some speakers, and you know, we can all chime in on what we're going to do, okay? It's probably, what originally we were going to do is, the chief was involved in the food bank, and they always did a turkey giveaway, and we were going to do it that morning there, but they're not doing the turkey giveaway this year over there, they're doing something at the food bank, so.
Okay.
Well, just down the road, this is introducing it, and this is, the name will be tomorrow, but the lettering and stuff will not be up until it's all done.
Okay, Councilman DeBrengo.
You didn't mention Mayor Paul Murray, but he is on board with it.
Yes.
We did. Oh, of course.
Yeah.
Talked to him, and I'm sure so, it'll be dignitaries, media.
Right.
And firefighters as well, and whoever wants to come that knew Russ, I'm sure there'll be some.
Right.
Military personnel there as well, so.
Yep.
Sounds good, looking forward to it.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any additional discussion on resolution number three? Resolution number three is closed, we'll move to ordinance number four, sponsored by Councilwoman Testa. Allen Street in Ontario, stops required four way. Is this housekeeping, or they're adding?
Does it say the sign's there, or no?
That the proper sign is to be erected, implying that it's not there.
Yeah, exactly.
UPD, everybody good with it? I have no problem with it. All right, ordinance number four, any additional discussions? Let's move to ordinance number five, this is the sale of some foreclosure properties, this is outside urban renewal, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Okay, wow, I see there's a few of them. Of course, we know that this is on a process of bidding out on it, or, is there any questions on this legislation? This puts the properties out to the bidding process for the city of Utica, any questions?
No, this is, this is, this is assuming the money, they're done.
Oh, they already, they already were bid on?
Yeah, these are the winners of the auction.
Oh, excellent.
Oh, okay.
So we're doing this so we can accept the funds.
We're just approving the sale, it's already been done, yep.
Hmm, that's unusual, aren't we supposed to do something?
What's the process now, after, now that we approved this, do they have a limited amount of time that they have to make their?
Payment?
Fixes to the house, or?
So it's not like URA, so it's, it's a totally different process.
Do they just buy it and work out with it?
They can speculate, whatever they want.
So they don't do anything with it?
I mean, they could be subject to code violations, but absent that, that's correct. I would say, most of the time, I mean, they're, these are usually outside of the urban rural district. They're usually in better shape, which is why we're getting the amount of money that we are, for the most part. It's not always a guarantee, but they're usually in much better shape, the houses. Not always, but.
Okay, any additional questions or discussion on ordinance number five?
Just add the S, add the S to purchaser, that's all.
Okay, can we amend that?
It says property address, and then misspelled word above it.
There are any, Frank? The second girl doesn't have a house.
No worries.
Purchaser?
Oh, yeah, yep, yep, good catch.
Okay, any additional discussions on ordinance number five? Ordinance number five is now closed, we're moving to ordinance number six. Um, yes, I'd love, I'd love, be sponsored by full council.
Full council?
Of course, everybody knows Ron Gaetano, he was an advocate for, especially for our children in this area, and he's been an advocate for children in many areas of the, of the state, I mean, even the country. He was a very good man, and he helped a lot of children go on the right path. He really did.
I thought he was much younger.
I used to see him almost every morning when I went to Panera, I'm surprised that he was, he was in pretty good shape, so.
In any case.
Hey, was, um, is there any discussions on resolution number six?
Are you coming?
No, I'm going to bring it to the house as soon as we're done with it. If you want to accompany me, it would be my pleasure, Mark. Any other additional discussions on number six? Okay, number six is closed. Number seven is resolution honoring Mr. Pumpkin's Park for the small park dedication. If everybody knows Mr. Hannah, he, he lost his dog, and that's what, Mr. Pumpkin was the dog's name, and he did a wonderful job in those dog parks, and he requested because he did put $62,000 of his own money in materials and services for the city to accomplish that, so. I'd like, like the council, full council on this, or?
Yeah. So will we, or somebody be doing a sign for this?
Most likely Mark Zykloski is going to do a sign and a plaque for it. Anything additional?
I mean, if something's going to be named Mr. Pumpkins, that deserves a sign.
Absolutely, it does, absolutely, we know how we love our animals. Any other discussions? Okay, number seven, go ahead, anything, Joey?
No, no, I thought you.
Okay, number seven is closed, I think, let's check out what's in committee at the hall.
Do you have a number of sales?
Got some sales.
We got sales, oh, yes.
Four, six, eight, ten, numbers four, six, eight, ten.
Chock.
And twelve.
Four, six, eight.
If you look in your committee folder, the cover sheet, there's sales of.
Oh, yeah, it was stuck there.
Seymour Ave, Hobart Street, Parker Street, Martin Street, and Erie Street. Are there any discussions on the sales of these streets? Well, of course, you're going to have the public hearing, but is there any discussions now where any of my colleagues would like to hold the, any of the sales? Nope? Okay, discussion is closed, we're going, is there any other additional discussions my colleagues would like to chat about?
Yeah, just really quick, and you're probably the guy to talk to it about, can you? I know the chief sent us the email about the towing, okay? Can we go, go through that and explain that, like, I know I talked to you about it, you explained to me that it's a state law with the fee, and I know you mentioned, I mean, that one, I don't have the email here, I mean, that guy's charging like $3,000 or $4,000.
Well, there was a person that was removed just recently, so, for doing something improper on the rotation, so if we want to talk, we could talk with the chief after on it, Joey.
Okay, I, I did talk to the chief, and that's what we talked before, the deputy chief. As far as he's concerned, he can't. As far as he's concerned, he can't really do anything for doing anything illegal, because the legislation does not cap it. So he can't take the guy off for charging that, because technically.
That's true.
It's legislated that he can do whatever he wants.
Right.
So, I mean, my question to you, and you explained to me that that's not something the city does, that's a state law, where, I mean, if you don't have insurance, there's a cap on it.
Correct.
But if you have insurance, they can charge as much as you want. And I mean, I, I know, it just seems, it seems, seems really high, and it seems like it's one person.
But we passed legislation in our first term about this.
But you have to understand.
Right, but that's what's in there. In that legislation, there is no cap, and that's what he was explaining to me, and that's why I just wanted to bring it up and see.
You have to understand, companies, insurance companies have the right to fight any overcharged tow bill. So they have the right to take them to court and to verify it, so it's up to them. We can't covet anybody's, anybody's.
Well, they're tied up.
It's not, when the people who don't have, it's not the civilians get tied up, it's the insurance company gets tied up.
The civilians too.
Then they're gonna, they're.
What civilian? It's the insurance company fights for an improperly charged tow bill.
Yeah, but when it, when it gets through, and they get their money, the person with the car is probably gonna get dropped from their insurances and stuff like that.
Well.
Will you explain to me, that's what I wanna know. Is there a way for us to go back in our amendment legislation and put a cap at two grand or 2,500, towards a state law? You won't have anyone towing.
Right, that'll be, now, here's another problem, Joey, that you gotta look at. So if you cap an amount, if you put an amount, which is very difficult, say the insurance company leaves that vehicle there for over two months. I mean, every tow bill that's over two months is close to two to three grand, because the insurance company dropped the ball on it, and there's nothing that you can do, 'cause the shop already notified them that you're charging storage per day. It happens. Matter of fact, I have a car in there that was total wreck, the person got injured, there's personal injury, and the insurance company actually has to pay until they pay the personal injury. So the car's sitting in my garage, and they're collecting. So it depends on the scenario.
And I know what we're talking, but I agree with that, but I'm not so sure, in what the email that the chief sent us, that that was the case. It almost sounded like the guy went for the lots, they towed him, and.
Again, that's a, that's a hefty tow bill, so the insurance company has the right to, you know, re, you know, go to court with them and try to do something, but the state, there's no state law coveting any type of towing.
So we couldn't, if we wanted to, you couldn't put a cap on it?
No, because they got the right to go, they got the right to overcome it.
So, I just wanna clarify something. The, the tow rotation, the purpose of the legislation, as I understand it, and as I believe all of you understood it to be, was to apply to our tow rotation list. So any call that the police make on behalf of an individual who's in an accident, or is stuck in the snow.
Arrest.
Arrests, where they need an evidence impound, it's when the police call and they need a tow service to go. This is not for individuals, so if I am on the side of the road and I need a tow, calling these people, they have to comply by the rates that we believe are set for. This is only for the tow rotation list. Frank and I have a difference in opinion of the interpretation of how that reads, but it applies only to the tow rotation list. But the problem that I am having, Melissa has, as does the police department, is we get calls from individuals who think that these rates apply to everyone. They do not, they only apply to police toes, but the legislation doesn't exactly read that way, number one, and then number two, as Frank pointed out, there is, it only applies to people who do not have.
Insurance. And we, we did that to protect the people. We did that to protect the people that don't have insurance, as you know, Stephanie said.
But we're getting called because of how the ordinance reads, it looks like it applies across the board for all toes within the city, but it really only applies to the tow rotation list.
So should we amend that and put that on there? I mean.
You can add the verbs and make it perfectly clear that it only applies to rotation list, absolutely.
I mean, it would probably alleviate some of the calls that Melissa gets.
Oh, let's include that, then. I mean, is it ever enough for the next meeting?
But it's, but it's likely not gonna stop all the.
So you're saying this guy didn't charge 2,500 or three grand, if I get a flat tire tonight, and I call him and say, hey, can you tow me?
He can charge you whatever he wants. He's a businessman, he can charge you the rates they charge.
And they know, the only thing that they can follow is if the police call, and the police call them to come there, right?
Correct. And again, Frank and I have a difference in opinion as far as what, the rates that they can charge, but the purpose of the tow rotation list was to have a set fee, because the police are making those calls on behalf of an individual who either is incapacitated when the police call, or doesn't have a.
Yeah, but we don't have a set fee.
There we go.
We do, but it only applies to people who do not have.
Insurance. Towing insurance.
Oh, okay.
Where Frank and I differ is, I believe it should be for, if it's a police call, if you're on the rotation list, you should be abiding by the rates that are set in the ordinance for those calls, regardless of whether or not you have insurance, because we're, you know, the purpose of it is to tell people, saying, this is who we contract with, we know what their rates are, but when people change their rates, it's hard to, you know.
Dangerous.
Yep. Well, the insurance industry, like I said, they oversee nasty tow bills and unwarranted tow bills, and unwarranted charges. So they have control of it, they can take them to court, they can take them to court and collect, so. It's hard for, it's hard for any of us to tell somebody else who has tow trucks, tow truck services, what to charge. It's like me going to any business over here and tell them, hey, listen, you gotta charge this, take it or leave it, you know, but.
But we, but because of how the ordinance is written, Melissa gets a lot of complaints about people overcharging them, or people towing them, and thinking that they have to abide by.
Well, I agree with you, we can, we can add the words rotation, that's not, that's not an issue.
Yeah.
Yep. You can add the words rotation.
Well, it takes the component of people not thinking that it applies to all toes.
Right.
But it doesn't solve the problem for the people on the tow rotation list when we have those calls.
Yep.
This is still gonna happen, but fewer people will be surprised by it, maybe?
You could try. Yeah, one step. If, it helps our clarified legislation, so.
Right, right.
Okay. Any other discussions?
I got a question.
Shoot.
Since we're talking about it.
Yeah.
Someone we all know, actually, but I won't say the name, was, was in the process of being towed, but they had called to be hauled somewhere, like they just called the wrecking company to tow them.
Car in an accident?
No, it was.
Disabled?
It was disabled. It was New Harbor Shopping Center.
Okay.
The person who was towing them was called by the rotation list.
So by the police?
By the police.
And where did New Harbor?
New Harbor?
Shouldn't it be you there, right?
New Harbor? I never said New Harbor.
Yeah, you did.
Or should it be Shopping Center?
Oh.
He used to say that.
Too much candy, too much candy. All right. Or not enough.
Okay.
No, so here's, here's my point. What happened was, the person hauling the car said, I gotta unhook you, because if I don't answer the call for the rotation list, I'm getting kicked off.
That's untrue.
Well, if it's not true, I, I feel like it's happened a few times, actually, when people get removed from the list, 'cause I, I get calls all the time from haulers about this. And that's something else we need to iron out and make more explicit in the legislation. Because this person then, who had waited three hours for a tow truck to show up, had her car lifted, ready to go, and they were like, hit you later, we dropped the car, and they left.
So I will, I'll just clarify, so, under the tow rotation list, there's a set time that a individual has to respond, so if, typically how it happens is, UPD calls and says, can you come and do this tow? They either say yes, or they say no. They have the ability to say no, they have, I think, two, maybe three refusals.
Three, yeah.
Or they're kicked off the list. Is that, is that right?
Oh, I know, that's how it works.
If.
And it's 25 minutes.
And then it's 25 minutes that they have to respond in between. So, I don't know if Ashen knows more about this, but we have a lot of issues getting responses to toes, especially when the weather.
Oh, yes, we do.
Starts to turn.
Yeah.
So, UPD usually goes through a handful of individuals before they get someone to actually.
Before we get a yes.
Come and do that tow.
I think the probability of that happening is low, when I just described, but I know it's happened. So I'm just curious if there was a way where we could also fire that out so it's more explicit.
I will tell you, I get a lot of complaints, I get a lot of complaints that are sent to me from Melissa about towing.
Right.
I get comments from UPD, we have a lot of issues with towing.
But it seems like the people are complaining about it, we're complaining about it, the people towing are complaining about it.
You could, but the system's working, and we're getting the cars towed, you know what I mean?
You know, it's a problem, there's another problem. Legislatures cannot react to every single complaint they get.
You can't.
Of course.
And there's such a thing as price fixing, which is illegal.
Which you can't do.
And the competitive market is something you have to look at, and if you react to everything, you get a call on your telephone as a councilperson, it's all you would do would be changing laws, and back and forth, back and forth. You find the happy medium that passes the lawyer test. You know, a lot of people, where they really have problem, it's not with the towing thing that happens itself, it's with their insurance company, who doesn't wanna pay this, this fee. Then, then you say, well, I gotta pay to get my car, I had to pay to get my car, and so I paid it. Well, there is, there's no such thing as a perfect world, you know, so, you, I just said to him a few minutes ago, you know how many times we have handled the towing legislation since I've been here? I don't, I'm not exaggerating, if I say 15, 20 times, you know? And it's always that somebody has an incident, and that incident wants to be corrected. You just cannot correct every incident. And also, there's also the free flow of the market, and throwing a person off the list, for instance, is really a very serious situation.
That's what I'm saying.
If you're on that list.
That's my point, yeah.
Yeah, if you're on that list, you got a lawsuit, you know, if you are improperly removed because somebody got to somebody's ear, and before you know it, you've lost hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I haven't really.
I, I, I'm just saying to you, I'm saying if you, you think you can pass the perfect legislation, I rather doubt it, and this is not a new subject, it's as old as anything we've ever done here.
Yep.
It's just the free flow of the market, you know? You're not supposed to interfere with the free flow of the market, that's what the marketplace is, is out there. And if a person comes, now, the problem you really have is when you have an accident, and you are incapacitated, then a person comes to get your car, you have no control over any of this, because you're in an ambulance. So you, when everything, the smoke clears, you get a big bill, you know? That upsets people. Well, what are we supposed to do? Take you out of the ambulance and say, here, we got this discussion here about your car, we're gonna take you to the hospital, find the car, you know what I mean? So I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to be facetious, but I'm saying to you, we've done this, I can't tell you how many times in the last three or four years, and I'll tell you, Councilman Miola has always been part of our bellwether, because he's in the business. We have a councilman who's in the business, and we pretty much listened to him while we were doing all this, and so, if there's something new that we haven't looked at, I'd really be surprised.
Well, you have to understand, there's only one bad apple out of 15. There's 15 guys on a rotation, there's one bad apple.
What people don't like is, there's always, you, when you have a claim, you have a claim.
Yep.
You have a right to go down to the city court and file a claim against these people.
And again, I just wanna.
It sounds like it's the insurance company that would file the claim, not the person.
And again, I just wanna clarify, a lot of them, in addition to the overcharging, but a lot of what we get is, people misinterpret who the rates apply to, that's.
That's true.
That's part of the issue. So regardless of what the council does as far as setting the rates with insurance, without insurance, that's the council's purview. But how the legislation is written is confusing to individuals who are looking it up, because they call Melissa and say, it says here that the fees in the city are $100 for a tow, why am I getting charged X amount? And Melissa tries to explain, well, it's only for the tow rotation list, and then I have to somehow figure out a way to say it only applies to them, even though it reads this way. So that's part of the confusion in the complaint set.
Well, hopefully we'll resolve that, we can resolve that in the future. All right. Is there anything additional?
Okay. Discussion's closed, and let's.
So, we've got 20 minutes to relax. Thank you.
The common council to order, it's November 1st, 2023. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ayello, Burmester, Friend, Miola, Urban, Beatrice Williamson, Colasmo Testa, Debrango, Gleimi, all present.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the council.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to change the order of business this evening, however, we will move the minutes, though, from the previous meeting. The minutes of the previous meeting have been posted to ECO 360 for the council and public to view. Do we have a motion?
Motion to move the minutes, Mr. President.
All right, would you like to read them or not?
I don't think we need to, sir. I did peruse them prior to the meeting.
Perfect. All right, we have a second. Any opposed to accepting the minutes of the previous meeting? Okay. Very good. The next order of business, we have Chief Brooks on a WebEx with us and his wife, Mary Ann. And we are going to be going right to resolution number three, which is a resolution named Fire Chief Russell E. Brooks II, Fire Station Dedication. Chief Brooks, Mary Ann, can you hear us? Very good, very good. Councilman Beatrice?
Yes. Mr. President, I'm gonna have you read this, but I just want to say a couple of things. That Chief Brooks was, as a young boy, I have somebody I always looked up to, and then I let him beat me up at, on the basketball courts at the Knights of Columbus. He's a very great guy. He did wonderful stuff for the city. And I just think, as the fire department, he started many things that will be read in the legislation that you read. And I just wanted to make sure, and I got with my colleagues, this will be full council, and wanted to make sure that we did this for Chief Brooks because he really deserves it. So, we're gonna do this tonight, and there will be a ceremony probably in three weeks when there'll be invitations going out. And we're gonna have a nice ceremony for the chief when the lettering is put on the building. And congratulations, chief. I love you.
All right, so, Councilman Beatrice, are you moving this?
Yes.
All right, so it is on the floor. I'm going to read the legislation at this time. Whereas, the City of Utica Fire Department has long been recognized as one of the top departments in the state of New York. Many brave men and women have served this great city with pride and distinction, one of whom we honor tonight. And whereas, Chief Brooks served the City of Utica for 43 years, like his father and uncle before him. During his time at the fire department, Chief Brooks would hold every rank in the department before being named its chief. Under his guidance as chief, the City of Utica ambulance service was started, the Utica Fire Academy was opened, the rental occupancy program was implemented, and the city obtained a number two ISO rating, a scale that determines how well a local fire department can protect its community and their homes. And whereas, during his time in the department, Chief Brooks would receive proclamations from the United States Congress and New York State Legislature, along with being honored by numerous organizations. These include Man of the Year by St. Peter's School for His Support of Catholic Schools, Firefighter of the Year by American Legion Post 229, Named a Living Legend by the Boys and Girls Club of the Mohawk Valley, and was recognized by the Red Cross, Cornhill Senior Center, and the Salvation Army. Most recently, Senator Joe Griffo presented Chief Brooks with a proclamation from the New York State Senate. And whereas, in 2001, Chief Brooks responded to Ground Zero with 11 other firefighters to assist the NYFD with search and rescue operations. They would later be featured in the book 12 Valiant Men: Utica Firefighters at Ground Zero. And whereas, a lifelong Utica resident, Chief Brooks currently resides with his wife, Mary Ann Brooks, in North Utica. They have four sons, Patrick, Michael, John, and Matthew. When his time with the department had ended, Chief Brooks continued to serve his community as president of the Building Committee for the Irish Cultural Center, president of the Ancient Order of the Hibernians, president of the Utica Food Pantry, and executive board member of the Great American Irish Festival. And therefore, be it resolved that with appreciation for his service, the common council of the City of Utica does hereby rename the Central Fire Station, the Chief Russell E. Brooks II Central Fire Station, as of November 1st, 2023. Be it further resolved that this proclamation will be forever recorded in the minutes of the common council meeting held this first day of November, 2023. Now, it's on the floor for a vote. What I'd like to do, even though I'd like to make sure the room is extremely quiet, Chief, do you have anything to say? Would you like to s-
Just thank you, and I admire that.
Thank you very much, chief. Thank you very much. Your votes.
I just briefly just wanted to say I love you, Chief Brooks, Mary Ann, and I'm honored to put this proclamation together, so. Thank you for putting this together and I hope to see everybody at the ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nine eights adopted.
All right, chief, you've got a unanimous approval.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Joe.
Well, thank you very much. All right, well, I would like both of you to have a great evening, and thank you. You're very welcome. Thank you. All right. Very nice, very good. All right, we're gonna go back to the order of business that we typically follow. I have everything here. Got a lot of wires up here tonight. All right, the next order of business is the public hearing. We do have a public hearing this evening. It is on the following properties: 1318 Seymour Ave., the sale of 2 Hobart Street, the sale of 1124 and 1200 Parker Street, the sale of 1402 Martin Street, sale of 1417 Erie Street. We do not have anyone signed up to speak on behalf of any of those properties, so the public hearing is now closed. Do we have a motion to pull ordinance number four from committee?
Move, Mr. President.
There we go. Okay. Just wanna make sure that was all set. Okay. Any opposed to pulling ordinance number four from committee? Okay. Ordinance number four approving the designation of Mizurumby Lima Manuel Felipe as ineligible and qualified project sponsor pursuant to Article 15 of GML for the purpose of the sale of 1318 Seymour Ave. For a sum of $548.55. He's on the floor for a vote.
Nine eights adopted.
Thank you. Is there a motion to pull ordinance six from committee?
Move, Mr. President.
Second.
Okay, any opposed? Ordinance number six is the sale of 2 Hobart Street for a sum of $2,081.20 to Simon Bueno from the URA. He's on the floor for a vote.
Nine eights adopted.
Ordinance number eight? Anyone?
Second.
Okay, we've got Colasmo Testa and Friend. Anyone opposed? Ordinance number eight's on the floor for a vote. This is the sale of 1124 and 1200 Parker Street to Luis A. Rotis and Maria Tenazaka for $1,120.45 from the URA. Your votes.
Nine eights adopted.
Polls ordinance number 10?
Move, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Any opposed? On the floor for a vote. This is 1402 Martin Street. The sale is going to Will Javie and Dawson. It is a sum of $10,500. Your votes.
Samantha?
Sam.
Nine eights adopted.
Proposed ordinance 12? Okay, any opposed? It's on the floor for a vote. This is the sale of 1417 Erie Street for a sum of $15,000 to Raoul Cruz Perez. Your votes.
Nine eights adopted.
All right. Next order of business this evening is public comments. One person signed up to speak this evening. Happens to be Timothy Julian. Could you please come forward? The common council's provided you a copy of Section 3244 Public Comment thirty rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Sure.
Please state your name, and you may begin.
My name is Timothy Julian, and I am current Knight County legislator in the 19th district, which encompasses most of South Utica and goes all the way down to where the Roundabout is. Some of you may remember I was mayor here from July 4th of 2000, right to the end of 2007. And one thing, as I look around this room, unfortunately, some of you come January 1st won't be here anymore. It's just part of the business. We've come to accept that. We know that. It's what we deal with. But you want to think about, because I've thought about this a lot through the years since I've left, and even doing what I do now as county legislator, what's your legacy going to be? And I broke it down into two different things. One, I call a legacy of sight. Things that I saw that I could drive people around the City of Utica and say to them, "I was responsible for this," or "I was responsible for that." And I think about residential and commercial development in North Utica. I think about the completion of the REC Center and the Utica Marina. REC Center now, of course, a great senior center and a great senior facility. Think about redoing and reclaiming Valley View Country Club as well as the golf course. Think about the infill housing we put up throughout central Utica. The auditorium improvements, which laid the way for what we see down there right now in Nexus. I think about Utica National's new building, which is now going to be part of the hospital campus. Loft apartment study, which so many people are now living in lofts in downtown Utica, which so many people said it couldn't be done. But also, you have to think about the legacy of what's not there. Things that you put your foot down, you fought the good fight, and you stopped from happening. Now, there's no longer public housing behind the auditorium, which again, kind of laid the ground for what we're able to do down there now with more parking and things like that. If you drive by the Utica Psychiatric Center campus in West Utica, there's no sex offender court there, which Chief Judge Tormi from Syracuse wanted to put there. We fought that fight, and we stopped that. If you drive down Route 12, the arterial basards is no longer standing. We went to the EPA, we went to DEC, and we got that building taken down. And now, there's business and enterprise there for the folks in West Utica area and throughout the city. If you're at Chanatry shopping, look across the street. What you don't see there is you don't see a bombed-out, dilapidated TRW Northrop Grumman building there. Because I took the effort to sue not only the county, but Edge and TRW Northrop Grumman, and got that building taken down. Yes, it's a barren field, but a barren field looks a lot better than what would have been there if we didn't take those measures. My favorite, the one I had the most fun fighting the battle of, is we don't look out our windows and see 110-foot-tall power line poles dissecting the city that NYRI wanted to bring in here. That would have decimated this city and probably the whole upstate region. These are some of the things of my legacy. So what I'm here for tonight, and it was fortuitous I was here with Chief Brooks's naming of the firehouse, because there's a man with a true legacy. But what's your legacy going to be? Soon, we're gonna do a study on St. Elizabeth's Hospital, dead set in the middle of the 19th legislative district, to look at the reuse of what may occur at that hospital. And I'm going to assure you, there's nothing that will go in that building that will be acceptable to us, who really want to see the neighborhood get better. So I make an offer to you. Kennedy Parking Garage is going to be sold. You're gonna receive $1.5 million from MBHS for that. Take that money, put it aside for the acquisition and demolition of St. Elizabeth's Hospital. There are still ARPA funds out there that the city has that have not been utilized yet. And if they have not been utilized yet and the projects haven't started, I ask you, go to the mayor, ask him. Say, "Can we have this money?" I figure that to be approximately $2 million. Now we're at $3.5 million. And yes, if we need to bond for the rest of it, whatever it may take to take that building down and protect and reclaim that neighborhood, please, look at bonding. If you say, "We don't want to bond for anymore," realize this, another legacy of mine, something you don't see. You don't see $27 million on your balance sheet for the downtown Utica hospital garage, because I fought the county as soon as I got there and said, "We are not," "we" being Utica, "not going to pay that extra $27 million for that downtown Utica parking garage." That's money we don't have to pay. That's money that could go toward the reclamation of that site. So let's let the rebuilding of this small part of South Utica, the St. Elizabeth's Campus, that sits between two grade schools, across from a large church, along our main street. Let's let the reclamation of that site be all of our legacy. Let's get that building down, please. Thank you for your time tonight. I always appreciate coming and talking to the council. This is a great group. I had a lot of good times here through the years. By all means, you do great work. Highly underappreciated, all of you. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I just want to note that his email is still mayorjulian@, an unnamed website. All right. That is our only speaker this evening, so we're moving on to common council guests, which we have none. We don't have any communications from upstairs, but I do believe we have a cash report. No? We're good?
We did get one tonight.
Yeah, we do.
Mr. Debrango has held it up.
No, I have it right here. It's, all right, so, this isn't the cash report necessarily, which is typically what that order of business does deal with. But we do have a summary of the quarterly revenues and financial reports. The council has accepted this, so thank you.
Yeah, I could make a couple of comments about their report if I could.
Yeah, let's do it.
You know, I had some concerns when I looked at it over.
So, Councilman Burmester, we are moving on to petitions, remandresses, and appeals.
Okay, I'll wait then.
Yeah, let's do it then.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. First district, Councilmember Keye Ayello, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will yield my time to Councilman Burmester.
All right, thank you. Second district, Councilman Burmester, give it more.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I had some concerns when I looked at this. We're down $1.2 million from the previous year and collecting taxes. It doesn't say why. It just says we're down. And of course, there was a 4% increase from last year's expenditures at the same time, which resulted in $1.9 million. When you break the $1.9 million into going forward, you're looking at a 6% approximately tax increase for our people. And I'm a little concerned that that's not the only increase for our taxpayers, so. I just want to get it out there and put it in everybody's mind, you know? With a new administration coming in, things are going to be different, and of course, money going forward is going to be considerably different. And just be aware of changes and what it's gonna cost us. And I guess that's all I have at this time, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Third district, Councilperson Friend, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is my mic on? Yes. This past weekend, Harvest on the Hill celebrated, I want, was it the seventh time that they had done that? Something like that. This is a great event. James Street gets closed off. Kids and families come out, and various groups give out candy. It's organized by a group called Cornhill Cares. And I do want to give a shout out to the main organizers of this event, who are Shonora Pierce, Nikia Williams, Tiffany Davis, and Franklin Davis. I'm sure that there are others, but they are sort of the mainstay of that group. It's a great event. It was a terrific success. And I had a great time. That's all I have tonight, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Box. Fourth district and majority leader, Frank Mioli, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to thank Councilman Mark Williamson and Councilman Beatrice on a wonderful weekend in the rain. They really cleaned out the corner cemetery out in North Utica. The gentleman also put a pole up, and they had a flock of children there, at least 30. And a lot of pizzas, a lot of pizzas went flying. They did a lot of digging, planting flowers, and it looked very- of digging, planting flowers, and it looked very, very well organized and very well done. They worked through mud. They worked through dirt to try to preserve the history of a cemetery that was put in that corner. Both of them went out of there looking like mud pies, but they did the job. I mean, you wouldn't let their boots go near your house, but that's normal. I'd like to thank them for what they did and showing the children that there is something in the past that made them who they are today. So, gentlemen, thank you very much for all your time.
Thank you. Fourth District, Councilman Dennis Burmester.
Hope I can get through this. Yep, Saturday, October twenty-eighth, the proclamation and sign that we approved for council was actually unveiled on Eagle Street and the corner of Eagle Street and I can't remember the name of the street now. Anyway, it was unveiled Saturday, a three-hour event, let me tell you. They had the VFW from two twenty-nine, the VFW from New Hartford, and they did a, I think it was a twelve-gun salute while they were unveiling the memorial sign. It was twenty-one, twenty-one, and I was looking at all the police officers responding. I wasn't paying attention to the guns, because they forgot to tell the police department that they were going to be shooting over there. So, but anyway, there was a lot of emotions. The family of Mr. Rebels and Mr. Gibson were very emotional about the sign. The sign is beautiful. The Buffalo Soldiers came and they turned what we approved as honoring them for business into actually a veteran ceremony, which was pretty cool, since Veterans Day was coming up. So, you know, it was pretty good. So, we had a good time. A lot of people speaking, a lot of little dignitaries. They considered me one, which is pretty good, because, you know, I am a dignitary, I guess. So, it went very well. I didn't make it up to Harvest on the Hill. I had to apologize to some people. And I think that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Sixth District, Councilman Joe Beatrice, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm going to let my colleague, Master Chief, speak of the Weaver Cemetery, but I do want to thank Councilman Miola. He was the power guy. He ran with power tools. And also, legislator Tony Leon and Jack Lomenico were also there to help us. And I'll let Councilman Williamson, you know, talk about his kids that did all the work. And the last thing I want to say is remember, the week of November twenty-sixth is the last, starts that Sunday, is the last week of bringing your green waste to the street. So, I'll pass my time on to Master Chief.
Councilman at large and Minority Leader Mark Williamson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President.
What's left of it?
I don't know what to say. You know, it just grew into something, you know, it's a revolutionary war cemetery. You know, you put up a Betsy Ross flag, Don't Try To Meet Flag, planted five hundred daffodils. You know, it was an ROTC event. And all these guys just came out and just helped, you know? Didn't really ask, they just did it. And so, I have to say that, you know, they're just good people. You know, they're all Americans. That's all I could tell you. So, thank you, everybody that came out and helped. Thank you. And the kids, you know, my Ratsy kids, they always do good. Always do good. Thank you.
Council at large, Samantha Plasmo Testa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm all set this evening.
Thank you. Council at large and President Pro Tem, Frank DeBranis, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to wish Judge Garamone a happy birthday. We're not going to reveal his age. We did have a little cake in the back before the meeting started, so we all got sugared up back there. So, ready to go. One thing I wanted to mention, Chief Brooks, when I got on the department, Fire Department, retired firefighter in nineteen eighty-nine, and he happened to be our deputy chief for our twenty-four hour shift. In the first five years, I was under his tutelage. And back in the nineties, we had a lot of fires. They had FEMA coming in. And, you know, we learned to trust him, and he really, he ran the fires the way, you know, you would want somebody to run a fire. We always watched out for our safety. He was excellent. We always critiqued after the fires. He always made us go through the motions, even if it was a false alarm. He'd make sure that you, you know, you do the right thing. And so, I'll never forget that, you know? He was always for the members of the Fire Department. And he was a great leader. He was a leader, not only in the Fire Department for all his years, but also, you know, for different organizations throughout the city. So, I think it's well deserved that he's going to get the Central Firehouse named after him. And I'll be there on the day that, hopefully, the media and we'll have a good showing for him. And I'll be there for the dedication ceremony. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next order of business, reports from the city officers. Chief Ingersoll.
I'd just like to say, you know, glad we could help Councilman Beatrice out, and I'm supportive of his proposal to rename Central Fire Station. The other thing is, the past couple days, obviously, the new hospitals opened downtown, provided, it proved to be a little, some challenges, some additional challenges that we weren't quite aware of until later on Saturday evening. But we are working through them with the hospital, with assistance from the county, and we're moving forward. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Corporation Council.
Nothing to report.
UPD Lieutenant Berger.
Nothing to report.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your presence. Okay, moving on to legislation. We already did one piece, so we're going to have ordinance number one, which is authorizing the sale and/or disposal of surplus city equipment.
I'd like to move this, please, Mr. President.
Second.
Okay. Be it ordained pursuant to section seven dot zero zero seven of the Utica City Charter, the mayor or his authorized representative is hereby authorized to sell the city-owned personal property described below. Further ordained, any such sale or disposition is subject to the approval of the Board of Asking Proportionment. Further ordained, the property to be sold and/or disposed of is described as follows. We have multiple pieces that have been reviewed in caucus, and this is now up for a vote. Thank you.
Nine eights adopted.
The full printout of all that legislation or all those pieces with pictures is available on E code three sixty, if anyone's watching YouTube and wants to check it out. Next piece, ordinance number two. Would someone like to move this?
Mr. President, do we know if it's on a northwest corner, southwest, or south, it says southwest, I'm sorry?
Southeast corner, yes.
Okay.
Burmester?
Second.
It's Miola's the second. This is intersections where stop required. Be it ordained in section two sixteen, three five eight, Schedule C, intersections where stop required. Be amended to include the following: Scott Street and Genesee Street, southeast corner of Scott Street. Be it further ordained, the proper signage is already in place. Your votes.
Nine eights adopted.
Proposed ordinance four, another intersection where stops required. This is sponsored by Councilmember Plasmo Testa. Would someone like to say, second?
Second.
I'll take the seconds. I'm going with Burmester.
Mr. President, in this ordinance, there is a two-way stop that's already in. It wasn't in our E code, but we voted on it six twenty, twenty-three. So, it was never posted yet. There's a two-way that's already there. So, we would like to amend the four-way, a two-way to a four-way. Is that correct?
So, the other question I had in reading this, four-way stop at each intersection. That, is it supposed to read that way?
That's how they've been reading lately, and I, there's only one intersection.
This way, four.
There aren't multiple intersections. At each corner of said intersection is...
Yeah, at each corner.
At each corner of...
The intersection.
Of the, or the intersection. Yeah. Said intersection.
Well, it should just say Allen Street and Ontario Street, four-way stop.
It, you said that there was passed in...
There, in six twenty, twenty-three, ordinance number six, we passed a ordinance that included Allen Street and Ontario, two-way.
So, it probably needs to be strike through with the new provision underneath it. It probably hasn't, it hasn't been updated on E code yet.
No, not yet. It was just done six twenty.
But I would need to know what's rescinding.
So, we would have to...
Does it say two-way stop?
Probably got it with UPD. That's the way UPD sent it in.
All right, I think I figured it out.
So, if it was a two-way stop, that's what, in the previous legislation, just strike through? I mean, it's going to have to...
Someone just make a motion to table this for a moment, we'll move on, and then we'll come back to it when the deputy clerk brings the actual piece three second. Motion to table?
Motion to table, Mr. President.
Okay, second?
Third.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, we'll come back to this in a moment. Ordinance number five. Would someone like to move this?
Motion to move, Mr. President.
Oh, second.
Thank you very much. This is a sale of foreclosed property. Whereas the city of Utica on October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three conducted a public auction of real property acquired pursuant to foreclosure of nonpayment of taxes. Be it ordained, the common council hereby approves the sale of the parcels to the successful bidders who are listed below. I'll just list the addresses. Thirteen eleven Oak, one thousand one Matthews, nine thirty-two Churchill, sixteen thirty-eight Wesley, nine oh one Dash nine oh three Lamb, ten eleven Newell, for a sum, total sum of three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, raised in the auction.
Mr. President, we're going to fix the typo. I take it in the word purchaser? Thank you.
Yeah.
There would probably be a typo in that whole sentence. Properties, addresses, so that's why it's just purchaser.
It's, no, it's purchaser.
Oh, purchaser would be S. Yeah. I got it.
Purchaser. Purchaser.
Hold on.
Not adding an S to the end, adding an S.
No, adding S to the there.
No, that's a table.
Got John Jay Khan over here.
When you have a table, there's one purchaser. So, correct me the next.
I thought John Jay Khan left.
Yeah, that's a heading. Purchaser.
So, it doesn't need to be pluralized. Property, address, purchaser.
Purchase, purchaser is spelled wrong.
Oh, it's spelled wrong. I thought you were going to put an S at the end. I kept looking at the end, seeing why would you put an S? There's only one purchaser, no property. Okay, yes, that's, yes, they'll correct that. Your votes. It was already corrected in the previous conference.
Nine eights adopted.
Thank you. All right. The next piece is a proclamation for Ronald J. Gaetano.
Motion to move, Mr. President.
Second.
Would you please read that in the record, sir?
Yes. This is a proclamation for Ronald J. Gaetano. Whereas it is the custom of the common council of the city of Utica to recognize and memorialize those who have had an impact on the community and have served this great city with distinction. And whereas Ronald J. Gaetano was born in Utica on October eighteenth, nineteen thirty-three, a son of the late Sylvester and Josephine Lovella Gaetano, he was raised and educated in Dollsville, New York, graduating from Dollsville Central High School, class of nineteen fifty-one. And whereas in nineteen seventy, after speaking to a local high school, Ronald Gaetano would leave his career in pharmacy and dedicate his life to helping teens and families with drug and alcohol-related problems. His passion for helping people would lead Ronald to speak to over five hundred thousand people across the country, giving passionate lectures and seminars, hoping to lead families to a drug-free lifestyle. He would serve four consecutive terms as the co-chairman of the National Drug Abuse Conference, testified before the U.S. Senate Joint Subcommittee on Alcohol, Drugs, and the Elderly, or as a consultant for the National Institute of Drug Abuse Prevention and Center for Substance Abuse Prevention Professionals and Advocates, NAPA. Ronald was also a member of the New Jersey Governors Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse and on the Governors Council of New York. He participated as a technical advisor for several television specials, including the CBS Morning News and the McNeil-Lehern Report. Ronald was quoted or featured in such national publications as the New York Times, the Newsweek, as well as authoring three books, The Elderly, Their Health Care, and Their Drugs, in their, how is this written here? Oh, The Elderly, Their Health, and the Drugs in Their Life, The One Hundred Most Asked Questions, Teenagers Asking Me About Drugs and Alcohol, and Please Talk With Me, A Guide to Teen and Adult Dialogue. Therefore, be it resolved that with appreciation and recognition for all of his service to the community, the common council of the city of Utica does hereby honor and thank Ronald J. Gaetano. And be it further resolved that this proclamation will forever be recorded in the minutes of the common council meeting held this first day of November twenty twenty-three. Your votes.
Nine eights adopted.
Thank you very much for hearing that resolution. Do we have what we need on the stops required?
Yes, whenever you're ready, Mr. President.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to pull?
Make a motion to pull this from the table, please, Mr. President?
Second.
All right, we've taken it from the table. Anyone opposed?
Well, Mr. President, I'd like to make an amendment to it.
Okay.
I'd like to amend to strike Allen Street and Ontario, northeast and southeast corner of Allen Street, from our E code.
That's the first amendment or the amendment?
That's the amendment.
And replace with?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's already there. This legislation is there. I just want to add it to it. So, okay, and replace with Allen Street and Ontario, four-way stop at each corner.
At each corner. It's a four-way stop.
Four-way stop at each intersection, corner.
It's just four-way stop.
Four-way stop, period.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that okay? All right. Any opposed to the amendment? Okay, your votes as amended, please.
Nine eights.
Okay. We have one more piece, probably the most important piece this evening.
Even if small.
This is sponsored by Councilmember Miola. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, resolution number seven, Mr. Pumpkin's Park for Small Dogs Dedication. Whereas on August tenth, twenty twenty-three, the city of Utica opened two new dog parks, at Tierra Proctor Park. And whereas the contractor on this project, Ben Hannah from Central New York Construction, donated some sixty-two thousand dollars of materials and services to the construction of the park. His beloved dog, Mr. Pumpkin, passed away just before the project began. And therefore, be it resolved that the common council of the city of Utica does hereby name the Small Dog Park at Tierra Proctor Park, the Mr. Pumpkin's Park for Small Dogs. And be it further resolved that this resolution will be forever recorded in the minutes of the common council meeting held this first day, November twenty twenty-three. Councilman, would you like to say anything about this?
I'd like to just say, if, I, Jack Lomenico and myself had the privilege of stopping there one day, when there was at least twenty to thirty dogs at those parks, sharing those parks. And there were dogs playing with other dogs all over the place, you know, going back and forth and, you know, just having a good time. And I guess it's just like people, you know? If you're only around people and your dog, maybe you want to be around dogs too once in a while. So, it does help, and I think they had a great time. So, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, I'd like to just note the sizable donation that Ben Hannah did make.
Yes, he did.
So, your votes.
Nine eights adopted.
Thank you. Is there anything else this evening?
Can I make a motion to adjourn, please, Mr. President?
Second, Mr. President. Second, Mr. President.